We'll call a meeting to order. This is the Thursday, March 21st, regular monthly business meeting of the Wasika School Board. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the second floor conference room in the central building. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the Wasika School Board webpage. Any public questions or comments pertaining to this meeting can be emailed to wasikadistrict@gmail.com. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation, undebted and invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No changes or anything? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors, not seeing anybody tonight. Move on to payment of claims. Darren.
Payment of claims. I reviewed the claims of the month of February and recommend action of payment for those claims. Accounts payable $1,677,265.15. February dental is $12,778.05 and payroll is $861,145.01.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve payment of claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move right down to information items. Eric?
Sure. Thank you. And as we move through our spring, we've had to get to some of our school report pieces of our annual reports from departments and buildings. And we have Hartley Principal Ben O'Brien with us here tonight, going to share with us some of the highlights of what's happening at Hartley, what we've got going on this spring, and there's lots of good things. I had the opportunity to be there a few weeks ago and find out that that Blue Jay costume is really hard to see in. I don't know if I am ever impressed by anybody who would actually go and like dance around and actually like know what you're doing in that thing, because I had to have my hand held just to walk out to the gym. It was crazy. So, anyway, but lots of great things happening at Hartley. And Ben, take it away.
Yeah, fun reading event. They did a masked reader, so five adults came out in costumes and read a book and the kids had to guess and, you know, it was just, it was a great time. So thanks for, Eric, for doing that. Tonight, I'm going to focus on a training that about a dozen or so Hartley staff have been a part of, paras, teachers, from all groups and departments, and it's like the Blue Jay Way. So, the Blue Jay Way is really K-12 now in the district, so we went away from WCRV, for those of you that have been around for a while, to get with the district on the Blue Jay Way. And we're focusing on, we are for the Blue Jay Way. So the presentation is available on our Hartley website. I enjoy the functionality of the new site and being able to get these things out. This is the product parents can see, so for those of you who watched the school board meeting, and you can go back and look at it, and you guys too, because I will go through it pretty quick. But yeah, this is what we came up with, so if you just give me about 10 minutes, I'd love to share. YP BIS, and it's really about teaching and recognizing behavior, so in that positive mindset. We need to teach behavior, just like we need to teach reading and math. So we're focusing in the last 18 months on building this model for Hartley to create a safe and respectful school environment. So we are for the Blue Jay Way. The four Rs is respect yourself, respect others, respect property and learning, right? And then we have a shirt we wear on Fridays. So on the next slide, you know, this slide and the next one will look the same, but if you look at the yellow at the top, so the yellow is all the different places at the school. So how do you, and on the left on the blue is how do you respect yourself in all those different settings? How do you respect others in all those different settings? Very thorough document, and this is stuff we teach the kids. These are our expectations when you're on the playground, when you're at school events, or in the hallways, right? So that's big picture behavior expectations for kids. The next one, right, looks the same, but now this is in the classroom. So again, on the left, it's how you respect yourself, others, property and learning, and across the top is what you do in all those different situations when you're in the classroom. Again, another document that the kids know and we teach to them at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. The classroom agreement is something every classroom does with their students, and they talk about what this looks like. We want the kids to have buy-in to what does respecting yourself look like? Keeping your hands to yourself? What is respecting others? Staying out of their space? But the kids come up with that information, and then those charts are hung in the classrooms. Last year, we had 18 out of 20. This year, we had everybody do it. So it's just a good way to get the kids to buy in on the Blue Jay Way. Something that we really enjoy are the videos. I bet you we have 40 videos recorded about how to show the Blue Jay Way in all the different settings. And the teachers enjoy making those videos. Those are not available for viewing. Your kids can tell you about them, but it's just showing the unexpected behavior and the expected behavior. And then we show those to the kids at whole school assemblies, and then they're available in the classroom. If something isn't working, you know, maybe there's issues with the restroom and too many kids using it at the same time, they re-watch that behavior expectation video on using the bathroom appropriately. So it's just been a strong resource to show and make it visual for the kids. If you've been to Hartley, you might have seen the top right banner on the wall and then the bottom poster on the wall, too. Those are just the expectations in the hallway, in the lunchroom, at events. So like, if you see kids with a fist up like this, it's a zero voice, and that's what we do in the hall. Kids are walking, and it's, it just helps, so we're not interfering with the learning of the others going on. And then the posters are just those expectations from the slides I showed you earlier on a poster. So those are all throughout, every classroom has one. We have one for the hallway, we have one for the bus. And then we do have our own school-recorded song that we play at our assemblies in front of the kids. There's the Blue Jay. Makes an appearance in the video, the kids get a kick out of that.
Is that you, Eric?
No, not that, not that time.
No? So yeah, there's, you know, and the big, the big thing, you guys, is it's the common language. Kids move throughout the school so much, the adults need to be saying the same thing. Like, I need you to be saying you're not showing the Blue Jay Way, or great job showing the Blue Jay Way. You're respecting yourself by staying in your own space, you know, and really being explicit with that. And it's, it's, it's been work to get adults to do that with kids. Like, we needed to take time to teach behavior, just like we do reading and math. So you can see, we re-teach it throughout the year, too. This slide is kind of how we handle behavior. It's very intense. You can see minor behaviors on the left, major behaviors on the right, and just, you know, staff managers on the outside of the blue, and then office managers on the outside of the yellow. I will let you, you can pull up the slideshow and look at that more intense if you want, but that is, that, this document alone probably took us half a day, because it's, it's really diving into how to support that behavior when the Blue Jay Way just isn't coming around enough, right? And it's really been a solid document for us that we use. The communication tool is just how we, how we work with families. It's how we communicate home. All these tools are documented on Infinite Campus, so it provides us data, and then we use that data to kind of make some adjustments in what we're teaching in terms of the Blue Jay Way. It really, again, you can look at it at your own time, a little deeper, but tracking major minor behaviors and getting that home to families, and then we use it as data. One of the things is the hallway. The hallway's a tricky time, so we were seeing some communication tools, and now we set up some supervision times for extra adults in the building, and behaviors go down. So that's the communication tool. The Blue Jay Bucks, man, we give out a lot of Blue Jay Bucks. They're just, you know, they're about the size of a, like a business card, reinforcing those positive behaviors. We do drawings on Friday. Teachers might have 75 Blue Jay Bucks in the bucket, and we give away erasers, fidgets, slap bracelets. Mr. Hudson came over for donuts with the superintendent. We did donuts with the custodian. Man, just real creative. The kids get to make slime if they get drawn out. So every Friday, you know, every Friday, 20, 20 classrooms, 20 kids get to do that reward. More positive, bigger picture is above and beyond, you know, just a golden J. So it's, you can see on the right, these are yellow, they're a little bigger, like exceeded expectations, you know, or cleaned up materials, or someone dropped their stuff in the hallway and the kid just, right behind him, bent over and started helping picking him up, you know, and nobody, nobody had to say anything to that kid. And then we take pictures of these golden Jays, the kids are holding them, and put them on our monitors, and it's just, the kids just stop and stare at those monitors, waiting to see who's gotten a golden J. So just a next level up reinforcement. We give away golden trophies, so our recess staff, you know, looking for those classrooms that are having success on the playground, like getting along, playing four-square without, you know, too much problem, playing soccer, you know, and then we give those to classes every Monday. And then our custodians, our evening custodians, you know, who don't see the kids, but they see the classrooms, and we award dust pans to classrooms every Monday, too, for the cleanest classrooms. So really, the big thing about PBIS is it's everybody, you know, and you're getting your custodians, your food service, your paras, and your office staff all involved, so it's kind of a, those are fun, the kids enjoy those. We do fine dining Fridays, right? So last Friday, it might have been joke day if kids had a great week in the lunchroom. Lunchroom is probably one of our most successful PBIS areas, just because the adults all know what we're working for in there, the kids know the expectations, and they can earn a fun reward on Fridays. Or the lights will be off, they can eat in the dark, you know, little things, but the kids work for it, it's kind of fun. We do whole school rewards, so two weeks ago, when we thought we could be sledding and snowshoeing and ice skating, we just had hot chocolate on the playground, because there wasn't any snow to do any of that. But we, we take those Blue Jay Bucks and we pile them up and pile them up, and then we fill in the Blue Jay Bucko meter as we, as we gather more of them. Yeah, and the kids just, our end of the year goal is wacky clothes day, so the kids are trying to earn Blue Jay Bucks, and we just keep tallying them up to try to earn that reward, so. And I think the last one, this one is, we started last year, but we have groups at the school, grade levels, specialists, choose brilliant Blue Jays. So this is like a student of the month. And at our assemblies, we, we have all the kids on the monitor on the big screen, and we pull up the slide, and then the teacher calls that student up to the front of the school and just shares, you know, the Blue Jay Way behavior that they're exceeding on, and we, we give them a, we had some bumper stickers, we're running low on those, so now we, one of our own employees made these brilliant Blue Jay stickers from his home, so it's super awesome, you know, another person getting involved with it. So the kids get that, and then we, you know, PBIS is like, how are you getting this to the community? So if you read the Pioneer, every, every couple months, they will get in three or four groups of our brilliant Blue Jays. So it's been in the Pioneer a couple times, so it's, and again, it's a great way to get it bigger than just the school. We also do a staff recognition, so teachers nominate other staff members, and then in the upper right, they, they get a choice of like a clothing day or a duty-free day, they give up their duty, someone picks it up for them, leaving or coming to work 15 minutes early, or a free school lunch, because I tell you, there are some meals that the teachers really like, so. And then we have a parking spot. So right now, this month, Karen Wilker, who is our Americor, she won the parking spot, so, yeah. It's, and the kids get so excited when their teacher gets nominated, it is, it's, if you have a chance to check with the assembly, you should, they're really neat. Just visual, so all the kids, all the adults on the board in the hallway. And then the biggest thing is, you know, reviewing it. I think this is how we're doing with it, and what do we need to improve, what do we need to take away? But yeah, this, that's kind of the product we put together with 18 months of training. It was nine days with about a dozen staff, so really, now we're growing it, fine-tuning it, and just getting it out to all the families so they understand it, and then obviously in the, in the, like, right, so the community kind of understands it, too. But Blue Jay Way for Hartley is kind of what I wanted to share. And it's on the website if you want to look at it more.
Any questions or comments for Ben?
I just want to say, I love it. I mean, what a fun way to build, well, and productive way to build school culture and, yeah, and, yeah, in the entire building. We're not just talking teachers and students, but your whole staff. I love it, so.
And you, you, when you're in the building, you constantly hear staff saying, in all kinds of situations, about something referring to the Blue Jay Way. You know, I mean, it's going on like all the time, every day, everywhere. It really is. So, yeah, and I'm sure it took a lot of work to get to that, but that's a good thing. Yep. Any other questions?
I think one thing I would just add is you can really see the direction that the board has set with learning for all and safe and welcoming schools from our strategic plan, and how that leads into what we're doing at the building level with something as, as straightforward as teaching behavior. And Ben said it, as well as any of us could. We teach kids how to read, we teach kids how to do math, we need to teach them how to behave as well, because they don't just inherently know those things. And so I really appreciate the work that, that Ben and the team puts in, and they have taken this by the reins and really gone to the next level with it, so. But you can really see that strategic plan down into the initiative at the school level with something like this. That's exciting for me as superintendent to see as well.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Have a good night.
We'll move on to superintendent report.
All right, well, thank you. I have two topics tonight to visit with you about. Both will be relatively brief, but I do want to cover a couple things here. In the area of strategic plan, I want to just cover some of the, we, in the most recent months, we talked about some of the results, and then in April and May, you'll get some of the spring results on the vision card. So this month is more kind of the just activities we're doing in all the different areas. And learning for all area, working on really getting professional development going for our red act and our literacy training. And those are all of our teachers in grades K-6 now, and she walked out, but Dr. McGuire's grant that she had written now has also been expanded to early learning, so early childhood teachers will also be able to get some of literacy training, PD covered by the grant, so that's pretty exciting news for us as well. And we're getting those in, and teachers are having, having really solid feedback, we're hearing from that. I'm hearing from districts around us, how are you doing that during contract time? Because we're not getting pushback from our staff as some districts are, and that is actually the product of the professional days that we've added into our, into our calendar. Sometimes it's better to be lucky than good in those regards, but we knew those were going to be productive days, and they're really, they're really showing some, some positive impact for these options. So teachers are working hard on literacy in the red act PD. High school's doing some curriculum mapping, making sure that they know from point A to point B what all of our courses need to look like, working that option. And then another thing at the high school that's, that has been happening the last two years now is some scheduled intervention days, where during Blue Jay, Blue Jay time, connect time, they'll, they'll work on, it's like one day a month or two days a month, they'll just work on what do you have to do to get caught up or get ahead with some kids. So really focusing on that personalized learning. We haven't used that, that particular tag line in a while, but the personalized learning still is happening for those kids and learning for all. Community engagement is focused a lot on our legislative committee right now, doing a lot of work with, visiting with our legislators, learning what's happening up at the Capitol. It's a lot of, a lot of swirl right now. There's not going to be really a lot of dollars coming education or anyone's way. It's a bonding year, not a, not a funding year, so that's, that's expected. But we're keeping our tabs on what's happening with, at the legislature. Interestingly enough, and this kind of goes to effective, efficient use of resources, too, some of the things that we've strategically done with our negotiations, such as employee safe and sick time being all of our sick time, such as making sure that we are working with our staff for unemployment opportunities. That really is, some of the legislative adjustments they're making aren't going to impact us as much, because we did not, quite frankly, try to just twist a way to meet the line. We actually did what was best for employees in the district, so that's really good to see. Activities are a big part of our community engagement right now. Obviously, the musical starting off tonight, Beauty and the Beast, should be a great show. We were, we were able to be a partner with Slaying Cutter and help with the kite day and help with the fireworks when the ice didn't cooperate there on the lake. So when they called us up and said, do you think you could help us? What a great opportunity to be a partner, help out with that. Negotiations, obviously, you have several contracts on the agenda this evening, as well as a few more that will finish up as the course of the spring happens, but really being able to effectively use our resources to improve contracts for our staff, continue to maintain programs for students, and stay within our financial means. That's a really big deal to all of us as we answer to our community. Are we, are we living with the, with the means we have, but not reducing programming at the, at the expense of that? So you'll, you'll hear about it in a minute when Mr. Mullin does the budget update here, but we've been able to, I think, very, very masterfully navigate some of the budget discussions we've had last few years to land where we are right now. Staffing for next year as well as getting underway. We are going to be, I think I mentioned this in the update, it looks like we might, we will be down a couple FTEs in teaching staff for next year, but that's solely going to be based on enrollment changes and registration needs. There's not anything that's going to be reduced solely for the purpose of budget. There are some reductions based on, we have to be right-sized for the students we have, and as of this moment, everything that we are aware of should be handled through attrition, either through retirements or resignations or, or other non-renewals that we need to move forward with. So, but, and we shouldn't have to do it, we won't have to work with any more with ULA and the complete abs like we had last year. So that's positive. That proactive work we did last year is benefiting us now in that regard. And then finally, I would just say that, you know, Ben did a great job talking about what we do for safe and welcoming environment, working with, making sure our students are costly physically safe. You know, a concern was brought up at our last insurance and safety committee meeting about some training and some of the things that were happening here at Central. We're able to get to the bottom of some of that misinformation that was shared during the meeting, but also we need, we need to continue reflecting what we need to do better and where we need to train differently and where we need to communicate more, and that's been followed up with. So we're consistently prioritizing those things as well. Interestingly enough, and I don't think they've published it yet, but Public Health, you may have known, they did that, that community, community health survey that they've been working on over the last year or so, and, you know, they shared some things that they learned from youth in the community about mental health needs and what they, how they feel supported around schools. So we'll be working with Sarah Berry and, and Public Health to see if there's ways we can partner to support our students more. And I think some of the questions that was coming in from kids is, how do I know what a normal level of stress is? How do I know when this is just normal stress? And, and how do I know when it goes beyond that? And I need help. And that's, what a, what a, what a great way to look at it from a, from a young person perspective of, so we all know as adults, life can be stressful, but it doesn't mean that, that they can't go over, go past a point where it's more than it should be, right? So how do we support them? So, so doing a lot of work on our strategic plan work right now, and, and that's, that points the update I wanted to share with you. Questions on that part before I move on?
Any questions?
Okay. Second piece I wanted to quickly cover with you is, we talked about it at the work session, the TIF application that the city has applied for with the state of Minnesota for the potential building that could go over there next to the high school. And the city did their presentation on it recently, and, you know, they're the application holders. Their open hearing is coming up here the first week of April, but as a, as a local government tax, you know, tax-receiving entity, we have the opportunity to provide feedback on the, on the project, and we haven't, you know, I didn't hear from, I didn't hear, you know, board members' significant concerns past our conversations that we had at our last discussion. So I prepped this up just as a draft of what we can submit for our feedback, which I felt summarized what the, what the board had discussed at the last time. And so what I would do during this conversation, if there's anything you'd like me to tweak, I certainly can, I certainly would do so, and then in our action items, you can approve it and I'll submit it to the city on our behalf. We don't have, you know, really authority to approve or disprove the, the application, we just want to make sure that our input is part of the process. And so I, I think we understand the tax implications, which there really isn't any for us right away. It's just delayed receiving of taxes once the building is up. So there's not a question there, but I do want them just to consider the congestion management during and post-construction. I heard that from our board members in our last conversation as well, just because we know that minimal disruption is a priority for us, and we just want that to be on the record as part of, part of our feedback. Is there anything else or any questions or comments or concerns with this from, on behalf of our district?
I think it summarized it well with what you said about the.
Good. Very good. Thank you. And as they get going, and Dr. had one more, one more and sentence, but as they get going, like, I think you had mentioned in our last conversation, as we, as we're able to use this development for our information gathering, for our own facility needs, we'll invite city representation to our facility committee meeting as appropriate. I thought about that after you mentioned that last time. As they get going on this and ground gets to be breaking, that will be key information for us as we think about what our next steps are. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. Matt?
Hello, good evening. I've got a few things for you tonight. Oh, wasn't quite ready for that yet, but that's okay. I guess you can pull it up. I was gonna say, as far as the expenditure graphs, continuing to track as we go through the year, but nothing stood out there, but if anyone had any questions, I could address those at this time. Percentage-wise, we're pretty much right where we were last year, but. All right, moving on then. Enrollment, same thing. We are lost a couple kids since last month, but kind of the normal as we go throughout the year. You know, the trend line's about the same steepness there, but once again, any questions? All right, now we can go to mine. And then lastly, the main topic I have tonight for you is just the final budget as we go into kind of the spring here, wrapping up fiscal year '24 already, so. You should have a paper copy as well, but this is something where we just take all of the various restrictions and other kind of fund balances that we have to keep and break them down into, you know, revenue expenditures and exchanges that we expect. The one we keep our most attention on is that second bottom, second to the bottom line there, the unassigned fund balance, which right now is actually a $19 positive, so we made it. But, you know, a couple of things with that, overall, the budget is going down about $100,000, but because some of those restrictions aren't meant to be spent down, you know, those are ones that sometimes we build up, sometimes we spend down, so that's not concerning, but I do like, even though it's very, very slim, that it's a positive at the bottom there. So that puts us at 22.4%, which actually is a decrease from where we were last year with the same exact unassigned fund balance, because our expenses are greater, so that's just how that works. And then 81.76 days, so if all the money from the state completely shut off and the feds said no more, we'd make it about 81 days before we ran out coffers were dry, so.
Calendar days or school days?
Calendar days. Uh, calendar days.
Can you explain the difference between restricted funds and assigned funds?
Sure. So restricted are more, sorry for lack of a better term, more restricted. So restricted comes from outside sources. So these are basically the legislature saying you have to set these funds aside. You have no choice. Assigned is the school board or Mr. Huthspith or someone said, hey, let's set these aside for a rainy day in case, you know, or, or some of them do have like, you know, purposes there, like the donations are going to keep track of, and it just keeps them separate. But those are completely, um, our decision. We put those aside. So that, that's the distinction there.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions on the general fund here before we move on to the other ones?
Nope.
All right. So this is the other funds, a little more truncated view on all these since they're, they're still important, but not as important. Food service, obviously we're in the first year of the state kind of led, uh, I guess free for everybody plan. So we're, we're trying to watch that closely right now. Obviously our money from the state is way higher than last year, but receipts are down. So, but just tracking that and obviously with Amy being in her first year, we're just making sure that goes well, but as of right now, no concerns. Community Ed as well. Um, we are still growing that fund with the current budget, but some areas are growing and some are shrinking. So once again, keeping a mindful eye, but nothing, nothing's standing out. And then all the rest are pretty straightforward there. But overall, the budget, you know, like I said, if there was something that was really concerning me, I would have brought it up beforehand. So we can go to the next slide.
Could I jump in real one, one, with one thing real quickly? So food service is one we had really careful doesn't get too high. Seven hundred and thirty thousand is too high. And so that one, we're going to see a little bit of a spend down. We put some capital expense that purchases right this year.
Yeah.
To make sure that we were able to get that down to a reasonable point. If it gets to be too high, the state will cause you, ask you to create a plan, how are you going to spend that down? It can't be, can't be higher than this. And if you note in community ed, what, the reason why I just want to point this one out, if you look at restricted for school readiness, that's our preschool and you can see how our preschool is, is a very net even or sometimes going backwards compared to the overall, um, community ed fund, um, which, and that has a lot to do with our, because that one is fee for service combined with our teacher contract, all that kind of thing. So that's a, that's one that we just will continue to work through of how we continue to, um, to support that, but those are restricted funds. So we don't have the opportunity to just, you know, move from Peter to pay Paul and some of those things. So it'll be an ongoing discussion with, with Nikki and with Matt and I about how we continue to make sure that those are solvable.
Yeah. Good. Thanks for pointing that out. All right. Just a pie chart here of how our kind of expenditures go. As expected, about 80% of our expenditures are in the general fund, but, uh, that's pretty typical unless you have a big building construction fund. Obviously that's a nice skews things. We can go to the next one. Inside the general fund, once again, salary and benefits is about 75% of what we spend all our money on. Um, and then the rest, you know, purchase services is another one. So that's, they're not our employees, but we're bringing in outside folks to provide, you know, that's a lot of like your OTs and PTs and that kind of thing. So, and then supplies, but, so that's how that breaks down. Revenue, once again, most of our revenue is in the general fund. You can go again. These are pretty quick hitters. And then of that, seven, 80% of it comes from the state. Um, and actually that federal slice should get smaller as we go. That's still some ESR dollars in there that are, as far as right now, cause the state could technically, I think, move it back, but September 30th of 2024 is the, the stop date on all the big ones we had. So it's coming to an end very quickly.
And, and why those might go on is because dollars that didn't get spent will potentially go back to the state and then will be reallocated again. So they could end up, they could end up extending that out a little bit that way. And however that may shake out for us, who knows? But that's just something to think about. But as far as the original plan that was done in what, 2020, 2021, that's this next fall, they're all, and we will have as much as we can spent where we can use. We didn't just spend just to spend, obviously. And so we used everything we could to provide services.
Yeah. This summer we'll have a lot of programming that's financed through that, but we'll have to figure out the plan next summer if we're going to continue those things. So something to think about. And then this graph is, um, maybe slightly confusing to look at at first, but just under, the yellow bars are the number of days. So that 81.7 days I pointed out is what that represents. And then the blue is the percent of fund balance. And then those red lines are showing our policy. So you can see we're slightly under kind of the halfway of the policy right now, but still very well into it. And our days have shrunk since kind of that 2016 heydays, but we were in a planned spend out. So now we're trying to level it off, which right now you can see the trend is that we're doing that successfully. And then just wanted to point out with the new website especially how to, if anyone out there wants to dig into or see these documents again, so you gotta kind of use those little triangles to get into these dropdown menus, but then if you get to that district budget, and I did actually upload the, the printed out copy just now, so it should be live. Yeah. And I think that's my presentation for now, unless anyone has any questions.
Can we go back to the previous slide for a second?
Sure.
Oh, before that. Excuse me.
All right.
Sorry. I always think it's interesting that, you know, people say, well, our local property taxes pay for the school. Well, they do, but it's actually less than 10% of all the money that we get to run the whole school system comes from local property taxes. And the vast majority of it comes from the state of Minnesota.
Yeah. And I'm not sure what the, you know, there might be a different state average. This might be unique, just, you know, depending on where you live and how things shake out with farmland and agriculture and then also commercial and, you know, more of the cities. But at least for Wasika, that's how it's sitting right now. But those are still, I mean, if we had, you know, no levy, but we'd still be talking some pretty heavy cuts if those went away. So it's still very vital.
Oh, yes. Definitely.
Can you go back to where people can see the financials if they want to look at that from the website?
Sure.
Under departments and, okay. Thank you.
Any other?
If you notice anything that's missing that should be up there, please let me know. I try to keep it updated, but it's kind of a, one of those things that if you let it slide too long, then it gets away from you. So.
They want to know where that $19 is.
Well, it's a positive. No one asks questions.
That's our rainy day.
And our fund balances between 15, our policy says between 15 and 35%. Um, that's a pretty aggressive fund balance policy. Uh, I shouldn't say aggressive. It's probably on the conservative end to be able to want to keep our fund balance that high, but it's, but it's on the 35% I mean end, but 15 and 25 would be very normal, uh, for our, um, size of district, uh, particularly since, like you said, $2 million could make a big difference on our, on our budget. And if we were to do, you know, when you do something like, um, if you were to make a building change or add a significant programming or go to, um, self-insured, for example, then you want to be able to grow that fund balance higher in the years prior to that to be able to prepare, um, for that. So we keep our fund balance with that span. I was talking with the finance committee a few weeks ago and I've been thinking about it a lot since, but it really does, it does benefit us to keep that, that span what it is, to be able to be flexible with those needs, but still stay within our policy. So that's good.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, uh, committee, board member reports. Grant, you want to?
Sure.
Start us off, please.
Sure. Since our last meeting, I actually had two, uh, professional growth and development committee meetings, um, because of how time worked out and days off, um, which just real brief on those, I think every, both of the meetings and the ones that I've been to, they, they do surveys on the professional development days to see how staff responded. So they can respond to that. There's a lot of talk about what are we doing next? How do we make sure it's effective? How do we make sure that people are involved? They kind of review things like that. So it's, is really, it's really nice to see them really thinking about how to best use that time to grow and learn and have all that helpful. So I thought that was really good. Uh, also had a personnel committee meeting, covered some basic stuff. Finance committee was a lot about the budget. Uh, and those are the things I did. Do you want to do this?
Okay. Julie?
Um, negotiations, we just had a quick meeting on Monday, um, working on final group contracts. Um, you'll see a bunch of contracts tonight in the action items. Um, yeah, but I think we're almost done with negotiations and cycles, so just about there. So, um, and then legislative, uh, for me this time, I went to the MSBA, MASA advocacy day at the Capitol on Monday. Um, this was my first time going and it was, it was really worthwhile. I really enjoyed it. Um, very informative. Um, I have a new I love public schools button, which everyone got. Um, but it was clear from everyone in the room that we all have a collective goal of, um, influencing our legislators to positively impact our schools. So there's lots of ways, but I think, I think staying positive is, is good. Um, but definitely, uh, listening to, to our, the education committees, um, from the Senate and from the House speak was really, was really interesting. Um, but it's, and it's important that we have a voice, um, up at the Capitol and I think Wasika schools is, is known. So that's good. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa?
Um, insurance and safety meeting was the end of February. Again, just kind of timing. Um, we reviewed dental plans, the health insurance policies briefly. Um, a couple of things that have been talked about the last couple of meetings was the Sharps containers. And so those were not in the schools before. Those are now in the nurse's office. Um, and the same with baby changing stations when we have different events at the performing arts center or at the high school and the gymnasium. Um, there wasn't a changing station there is kind of the, the feedback that we got. And I did notice, cause I was in there just last week, that there is now a baby changing table in the, um, family restroom or, or the unisex restroom at the high school. So, um, other things, um, what was the other meeting? Oh, uh, community advisory meeting, had that this week. It was Nikki's first one that she ran on her own and, um, it sounds like she just is going full speed ahead. She's got all sorts of great new ideas. Uh, I think that the community is going to be really happy with her ideas and her implementation of those. So a lot of exciting new classes happening, new offerings. Um, she seems very organized and I know she asks for a little grace right now because there's so many people wearing different hats and doing old jobs and new jobs. Um, but it's, it's looking good. So.
Okay. Thank you. Theron?
Uh, head policy, I think we'll be running through a few of them here later. Nothing crazy at all there. Um, sent, we had a legislative meeting as well, talked about going to the Capitol. I didn't get to make that trip. Um, insurance and safety, Melissa covered a lot of that there. And facilities, we're just, um, talking, you know, trying to look at the right, the right option now after all the information we've gathered and, and just, just keep moving forward, um, not, not sit on any of it, but keep making sure that we try and get the right plan together.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to mention at the superintendent evaluation committee meeting, we're, um, getting some work done on a board member handbook. Um, Eric is, is doing a lot of that work. Um, we've found some examples, I guess, that we can work from and hopefully we'll have something that will be adapted to, uh, Wasika here very soon. Correct? Okay. So I wanted to mention that. And then, um, I did get an email from Colin today, uh, Colin Detmer. He just said, uh, Addy and I will both be unable to make it to the board meeting tonight due to the musical performance being at the same time. Here are our updates if you'd like to, to read them for us, and we will. Uh, the musical is this weekend. Please come check out Beauty and the Beast on Friday, Saturday, seven o'clock and Sunday at two o'clock. Tickets are $10. Band and choir state solo and ensemble contests are this weekend. Congratulations to the students who qualified and good luck competing. Choir large group contest at Amazing scoring a perfect score from all three judges. Oh, wow. Which is very impressive. The video of our performances on the choir's Facebook page. The choir trip to New York is also coming up and we're all super excited to sing at the cathedral and go to Wicked and Six on Broadway. Band large group contest was also this week, scoring a superior for both concert and symphonic band. State, BPA and DECA occurred this past weekend. Congratulations to everyone who participated in that. Spring sports have started practice, uh, so we're all excited to prepare for our seasons. Uh, we're very proud of the boys' basketball team for making it this far in state tournament. I know the pet band had a lot of fun at the game yesterday and we wish the team luck in their game today, which they're playing right now. Congratulations to our winter sports athletes who went to state and were named all conference. They put a lot of hard work into their respective sports and we are excited to see how far they can go. And then for shout outs, he said, a big shout out to all the people who were involved in the musical. We worked hard on putting the show together, especially these past few weeks, and we're excited to show the community what we've been working on. So, uh, recognition, positive feedback. Grant?
Um, I was going to also mention the play because I know they put a lot of time into that and really encourage the community to go see it. It's always a good, I mean, I haven't seen a bad show that the high schools ever put on. So it's always, it's a good, good time to go see it. Um, of course, uh, there's a lot of attention to the basketball team, which has been great. I also want to mention, there's a lot of things kind of under the hood that people don't always know about. Uh, Colin mentioned the DECA and BPA, which is great because they went up and did things. There's the, uh, the choir and the band. There's a lot of efforts put to all those other events by the, the teaching advisors or the teachers or the directors. Um, robotics team is going to the nationals competition in Dallas. So there's a lot of significant things that happen that I think really our students, uh, benefit from and, and really makes a difference to those students. So thank you to all the people who make those happen.
Okay. Thank you. Julie?
Um, I also want to say I'm looking forward to the musical this weekend. It looks really fun. All the preview, um, previews on, on social media and stuff look really fun. But I want to thank everyone who rocked their socks today to celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. So I know all of our buildings participated. Um, my son and I spent a couple hours at Hartley on Tuesday, um, doing our annual, um, talk about, about Down Syndrome and we really enjoyed seeing all the students, um, and sharing our message about inclusion and kindness. And by the time we left, I know a lot of kids were, were pretty excited to wear their socks today. So, um, thank you, everyone. And then also I want to thank, uh, Dr. Huthspith for the opportunity to go to the Rotary meeting with him today. So one of our board goals is to in, in increase our community engagement. And this was a different opportunity that he offered, um, this time around and I really, really enjoyed the meeting today. Um, recommend if you have a chance in another month to go, uh, to go with, to go to that. So.
Okay. Sounds good. Melissa?
Um, it, in addition to the Blue Jays basketball, we've got a couple alumni, the Willingham brothers who are doing quite well at MSU. That was a really fun game to watch on, on Tuesday. Um, another thing, um, a food share, I was at Hartley, they've got oodles of noodles in their hallway. So that like, seems like that, um, food share month is going really well. Um, shout out to all the custodians at Hartley and WIS. Um, they've really been helpful. There was a volleyball tournament on Saturday and those custodians really just, um, they're always there asking what you need, trying to stay out of your way, but just always available. available. So we're thankful for them as well. I think, oh, sneak peek, more about the play. Megan told me they had a sneak peek at school today, and they're all, all the kids are talking about it. So hopefully that helps their attendance if they've got space for this weekend. So.
All right. Thank you, Theron.
I think a lot of good things are covered here. I'll just touch base. I think our high school, junior, junior, senior high out there gets utilized heavily February, March, and come back to the custodial and all the staff out there just for getting it set up and tore down and cleaned up. And over and over again, price seems really repetitive and a lot of people come and go on. So.
And they're there all the time.
Yeah.
And they don't know how to get noticed because they do a pretty good job. So you don't notice.
They're just very helpful. I mean, I had to pull one away from vacuuming today to unlock a door for me. So, and you know, there, there was no problem with it. He's just like, absolutely. And so it's, it's appreciated.
Okay. And I just wanted to add too about the food chair. I know, like you mentioned that Hartley is doing a, the noodles, yeah, I guess they're gonna bury.
Oh, yeah.
Ben O'Brien in the noodles or something like that.
There's a lot of noodles.
Yeah, yeah. But they're, you know, to donate them to the, to the food shelf. I know WIS just did something last week where they raised over a thousand dollars. They, somebody brought in little baby pig and they had kissed the pig. And that was a big deal. And, and again, they, they raised quite a bit of money for the food shelf. And I know over at the high school, between the junior high and senior high, they've had food drives this year too. So I think that, that speaks very highly of our, of our school, of our kids, of the staff, and the, and the community too. So appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to action items. First item there, approve acceptance of gifts and donations. We got a couple of donations, five hundred dollars from Crystal Valley for the FFA and five hundred dollars from Climate by Design International for robotics. And I just want to mention that the robotics team went to Omaha?
Iowa.
Where?
They were in Iowa.
Yeah, they were in Iowa. Okay. And they ended up like fifth out of a hundred and sixty-nine teams, which is super. So we want to congratulate them. And they will be going to the nationals in Dallas, I think, soon. So, yeah, good deal. So do we do a roll call?
Yeah, first you have to have a motion and a second. No one made a motion yet. You gotta get the motion, and then we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Jill, do you want to?
We have to have a motion. I'll make a motion to.
Oh, sorry. Trying to think of too many things at once.
Have you ready to do it? Okay, very good. Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Action item B, approve the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-five and the two thousand twenty-five to twenty-seven master agreements with the Wasika Educator, Educators Association.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion to approve. And a second, any more discussion or comments?
I would say is these are similar to what you've seen over the last several weeks. You've got the information out there. The, the financial impact was also rolled into the budget document that Mr. Mullane presented earlier. So all of these contract increases are already in the other document in terms of affordability. You can see that it's working out.
And I just want to add that for this one and the other contracts here, lots of conversation, lots of work involved. And thank you to, to district team and then the negotiating team on, on the other side. I mean, it was really good conversations. And I think we came up with some, some really positive agreements with our staff. So.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approve two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five master agreement with community education paraprofessionals.
All motion.
Okay, motion to approve.
I will second that.
And a second. Any comments about that? Questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item D, approve two thousand twenty-three to twenty-five master agreement with building technology staff.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. A motion and a second to approve that agreement. Anything there? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approve two thousand twenty-three to twenty-five master agreement with our director of teaching and learning.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Julie?
I'll second.
Okay. Alyssa seconds. Anything there?
Just for clarification, these are all basically started last July.
Correct.
Eight, sixteen months from now.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Approve TIP application feedback. Do you, do you want me to read this or just?
No, as presented. You could just make a motion as presented.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the TIP application feedback as presented.
All right. Yep, Theron?
All right.
I'm not going to fight for it.
Julie makes motion there in seconds. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four final budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four but, final budget.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four final budget. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Approve staff sharing agreements with independent school district twenty-one forty-three Waterville, Elysian, Morristown.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. Eric, do you have any comment?
Yeah, the comment I would make is that because we have a new trimester coming up and as student needs change, that's why this gets modified throughout the course of the year. It's not like we're adding a new position really or anything like that during the course of the year. But as FTE needs change as the year goes on, that's why you're seeing those now. But every trimester, we update it.
Okay. All right. All in favor of that motion to approve that agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approve purchase of service agreement with Watanabe Public Schools for deaf hard of hearing services.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Theron makes motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, Alyssa seconds. Anything there? No? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Approve reviewed policies. Four twenty, four twenty-one, well, maybe I read these. Four twenty, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Four twenty-one, gifts to employees and school board members. Four twenty-two, policies incorporated by reference. Four twenty-three, employee-student relationships. And four twenty-seven, workload limits for certain special, special education teachers.
I'm motion to approve the review policies.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay, any comments or question?
As Theron mentioned earlier, no changes to any of these policies. These are relatively statutorily based, based on state law. So there's really wasn't any changes to be made here.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve the reviewed policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. March twenty-first would be our next.
Is today. So I would, I would update the act.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Our work session is April fourth, and our next meeting is April eighteenth. So I apologize for the misprint on the paper.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
I wonder what the score is of the basketball game.
Radio crew ninety-two dot com will have it.
Yeah. Well, I hope, I hope the weather this weekend doesn't interfere too much with the play because I know it's, it's a big production and, and a lot has gone into it. And I'm looking forward to seeing it. So motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.